Counselor at twenty-nine, could we get those mics screened, please?
No, she's not here today.
No, no, her ma- her ma had a stroke Friday.
Really?
Yeah, her thoughts out for her. Is that cool?
Sure, I'll get my chair all warmed up.
Here, make sure you're arced.
All right, the clock has struck thirty, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to everybody in chambers and to those that are tuning in via our broadcast. I'd like to pass the floor to Clerk Tomasic to please call roll.
Schumate?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
Cosmore? McNabb?
Here.
Mulnar?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
We have one absent council member, Councilwoman Cosmore. I want to send our love to Councilwoman Cosmore and her family. She cannot be here with us tonight, but she's right where she should be, with her family. We'd like a motion to excuse Councilwoman Cosmore, please.
Motion to excuse, Marsha.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just prayers and thoughts for her ma.
Absolutely. Katie, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
That will bring us to our approval of the agenda. Counsel, I do have one request for an addition to our agenda. That request is going to be proposed as Item B under my report. That item will be an update regarding our Department of Public Safety. We had two things arise. One is proposed appointments to our dispatch committee, given the shifts and personnel required there. And the second is our interim Director of Public Safety had raised a consideration around scheduling of shifts for our police department in 2025, so I wanted to talk you through that. So I'd like a motion to add Item B, which is update from our Department of Public Safety to tonight's agenda under my report.
Make that motion.
Motion by Mulnar, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood, any discussion? Katie, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox? Yes.
Fantastic, now with an approved agenda, we'd like to turn it over to our public comments. At this time, any members of public that would like to address counsel, please approach. Make sure that light is green on the podium and state your name and your address for us, please.
My name is Michelle Ostendorf, my address is three zero three four two Adams. I have lived in Gibraltar for about twenty years. And some, as some of you may already know, my granddog, Tito, was killed by a car in front of my house about ten days ago. His mother and I intend to turn this tragedy into something good. For years now, I have walked my dogs down the streets of Gibraltar and have actually feared my life at times because people go too fast. I can hear people accelerating at the stop sign, the only stop sign on the corner there at, on Adams, as they go by my house. And we have a petition that we would like to present to the council and to the mayor, and it reads as follow- following. "We, the citizens of the city of Gibraltar, petition the city of Gibraltar and the Public Safety Department to implement safer neighborhood speeds. There have been increasing speeding on Adams Drive and people not fully stopping at the only stop sign on Adams Drive. These incidents have caused a serious safety issue for pedestrians and animals. We ask the city of Gibraltar to add additional stop signs and enforcement of others or other solutions after a serious review of this current speeding data." If I could give this to you?
Please, thank you. Thank you.
So, we only really had, after meeting with you, forty-eight hours to collect signatures, and we have eighty signatures in that period of time. While we, while we were collecting the signatures, I had lots of, I had some help, but I also had everybody tell me that this has been a problem for decades and that they have complained for decades and that nothing has ever been done. So, I guess I ask that, on behalf of our beloved dog, Tito, that something can come, good, that can come of this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are so incredibly sorry for your loss. And I, I had sent counsel a email communication via Katie that consisted of our interim Director of Public Safety's note, as well as the note that I received from the family. I want to make sure counsel had a chance to refer to that. I also sat down with the family on Friday evening, for which they had shared their suggestion around considering not only the traffic control data, but also, you know, the action opportunity related to stop signs. If you look at the map, you know, and the distribution of stop signs, as was highlighted, there is that stop sign at right, but there's not another stop sign at the following street or the following street. We know a couple things. One, interim Director of Public Safety had reached out after that meeting, and the letter that he had written in email format, shared with counsel, had suggested a couple things. One was the radar sign that we have in the city, ensuring that that radar sign is moved to the location that this tragedy had occurred. Two was some additional enforcement of speeding by our officers on the road in that vicinity. And then the other thing that I had mentioned to our interim Director of Public Safety coming out of the meeting was leveraging that data to consider adding stop signs along Adams. I think it'd be a very astute exercise for us to not only get the data, but to take what is observations and eighty signatures from our residents in our community and put it in your hands as our interim Director of Public Safety to bring forth the data around the traffic control and behavior, as well as proposals considering additional stop signs along Adams, or perhaps even largely speaking across the city where you see fit. I think the addition of the stop signs at every other street or every third street could help on acceleration and deceleration, in addition to consciousness as people are driving down that road or other roads in the community. So, interim Director of Public Safety, anything you'd like to add? I just want to summarize for counsel kind of where we're at today.
Yeah, I'm very sorry for the loss of your dog. I did receive a complaint last week from a third party, and I did immediately send out an email to my officers to, you know, conduct traffic enforcement. That being said, right now, the traffic sign in town, it's on a two-week cycle, which will be over at the end of this week. I'm going to do two cycles, two two-week cycles, so four weeks total. I'm going to run the radar northbound and southbound Adams between right and the cul-de-sac of Bayview and Adams. And then after I get those results, I'll bring it to counsel, possibly installing stop signs midway in between. So we'll see what the results of the study is, and then I'll be in touch with you.
Thank you.
So, I, I mean, I live right there, so I will see the cops sitting there, right? Everybody behaves themselves when the cop is there, but when the cop is not there, they don't behave themselves. They run through, it's, it's like a yield sign most of the time.
We're around. You might not see us, but we're there.
Well, I know you sneak on the side, but I'm just saying that when people see you, they tend to slow down, but it just, you can't be everywhere. And I completely understand that, so. But I appreciate when you are there. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I hear the proposal correctly, we would be able to then leverage that data from the traffic study to then provide, counsel could provide a resolution or the appropriate guidance to support the installation of additional stop signs in that area.
Yes.
And that sounds like we could get that action perhaps second meeting in December or first meeting in January, depending on the timeline you just laid out?
Yes, the, the sta- the speed enforcement sign will be moved in one week.
Yep.
So I'd like to collect four weeks of data, because it's on a two-week cycle. So I'd say let's shoot for January, maybe the first council meeting in January, and I can provide the council with my results in my packet.
Counsel, any, any reaction to that proposal? Do we sound like we're on the right track?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, that when the stop sign went up on Stofflet Street when the middle Gibraltar Bridge construction was occurring at Bayview and Stofflet, that was temporary in nature, I think, when it was first put up, and I think it's been permanent because it had such a positive impact of slowing down the Stofflet traffic that seems like a reasonable approach.
We are so incredibly sorry for your loss, and you have our commitment that no later than January thirteenth, which is our first meeting of the new year, we will have the collective data, and we will work with counsel to give directive to put action in place around this topic. So thank you so much, and thank you to all the members of the community that signed this petition. I'll make sure that it's scanned and that a copy is given to all members here in chambers. Sending love to the family.
Cindy Fesco, Cindy Fesco, two nine four one five Adams Drive, Lacy's grandma. But the idea is, I, that sign you have up there, when I walk, I see the cars slow down when they see the sign. And as soon as they get past the sign, they speed up again. And that's the problem with the sign, because they slow down when they see it, and then it's like, they speed up, and because I'm watching the numbers, and so I don't know how much that really does do it. And even, I'm going to say even in mid Gibraltar and Adams, one of the guys that signed the paper, he lived on the corner there, he says he's afraid to back up, because as soon as they get off mid Gibraltar, they start speeding down Adams. So that's the idea. We need more members, more citizens of Gibraltar, if you're listening now, to call the mayor, to call the police officer, to contact the council people, and express their concern. I know Adams is not the only road with this problem, but we have to have, well, I moved there four years ago. My neighbor warned me about the traffic on Adams. But I came from a busier street, so it didn't bother me, but when I watched the cars speeding by, the other morning, look out my window, when five minutes, street cars speed by. I don't have radar, but you can tell they're going one in twenty-five, and the people with children are really concerned about it, because what if a child runs out? Although, we need something done before a child gets hurt. I mean, a pet, yes, but once a child gets hurt, because it's the same thing, this car's speed, and we want a safe neighborhood to live in, and it's not safe anymore, not with the streets the way they are. And like I said, it's not just Adams, it's other streets too. And two, I noticed that the temporary sign, like on Lowell and Coral now, I don't know if we can put temporary signs like that in other places too and see what happens. So that's my suggestion, but I need, we need the citizens of Gibraltar to call and voice their concern, that's the bottom line, because it's been going on for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of public that wish to address counsel in our opening public comment section? Okay, with that, we will close our opening public comment section, and we will have another public comment section before we adjourn this evening. Counsel, that will bring us to our consent agenda. Counsel, in front of you in your packet, you will see Items A through E. Item A, bills reference number ten A and ten B. Item B, payroll number nine one eight, nine one nine, nine two zero, and nine two one. Item C, city council minutes of eleven twelve twenty twenty-four. Item D, planning commission minutes of ten fifteen twenty twenty-four. And lastly, Item E, DDA minutes of ten fifteen twenty twenty-four. Be looking for a motion to approve consent agenda, Items A through E.
Motion to approve consent agenda, A through B.
Motion by Mulnar, is there a second?
Second.
Ladies first, second by Wood. Any discussion? Katie, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item on our agenda is communications, for which we do not have any this evening. And that will bring me to my report this evening. Based on our modified agenda, I have two items for you. Item A, counsel, I'd like to refer you to your packet. What we had was, I thought, a very productive study session, and in that study session, we covered our strategic priorities, from our water loss and flood control, to our infrastructure improvements and our focus on that, to our financials and process and procedures, to our zoning ordinances and updates and enforcement, and to our professional services, our operational structure, and items like equipment inventory. And when you think about, the addition was number six, department head reviews. But what I'd like to just call out to counsel, no action required, other than to say, I took our notes from the discussion, and I updated all the strategic pillars to incorporate the updated actions in blue. So I just want to stop here and see if there's any questions or comments after you've had a chance to review this. If not, I think we have a very comprehensive list of our strategic pillars. Thank you for the study session, and we have a lot of work to do, so I think this will be a great playbook and project roadmap for Mike as you help us carve the path ahead. Any questions or comments on strategic pillars and priorities? All right. That will turn me now to our Item B, which is our update from the Department of Public Safety. I'll take the first item, which is, if you recall in our previous discussions amongst counsel, we had flagged the need to update appointments for our dispatch committee. If you recall, that dispatch committee serves as five individuals, three from Gibraltar and two from the city of Rockwood. That's focused on our absorption of the city of Rockwood dispatch services and making sure that there's a board of five individuals that can weigh in on hiring decisions, on purchase decisions that exceed a threshold, et cetera. Councilman Mulnar has sat on that, but we need to make two updates. So interim Director of Public Safety Bullard, or Councilman Mulnar, do you want to talk us through the updates that are proposed for the appointments?
Sure. We have two positions open and want to fill them with Mr. Bullard and also Ms. Leckety. So Terry Leckety and Bruce Bullard would be the appointments that we would look to approve here today.
So we could get counsel for one motion, but I wanted to just see this floor to see if there's any questions or comments regarding those two individuals serving as members of this board. And if not, a motion being counsel's order to appoint those two individuals to our dispatch committee.
Motion to appoint Terry Leckety and Public Safety Director Acting, Mr. Lieutenant Bullard, to the dispatch committee.
Second.
Second by McNabb, any discussion, counsel? I know the two members, you had been in touch with city of Rockwood and other parties involved, so I think we're in a great spot, and thank you for your service, and if you're listening, thank you. With that, Katie, please call roll.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes. Great, second item is important one to raise with counsel this evening. This is fresh off the press, but I want to make sure we can put it in front of you this evening. So to give you kind of the bigger picture, with our interim Director of Public Safety and with the job you are doing to make sure that our department is looked after, one logistical item we need to work through is scheduling of shifts for 2025. According to the union contracts, there's a thirty-day notice required for the scheduling. So I tell you that because in the next five to seven days, our department, our police officers, would be working through their seniority schedules and their shift scheduling for 2025. With that being said, we want to make sure that counsel can take a bigger picture look at the structure of our Department of Public Safety and the path that we're moving forward towards for 2025. And in order to respect our union contracts and the window of time allowed for the scheduling, as well as to not make a rushed decision or path guidance, I'm asking counsel to consider one thing this evening, which is to request from our union representatives a letter of understanding that no shifts are formalized in their schedule until after December ninth. Why I'm requesting that counsel, I would say puts forth that letter of understanding proposal to our union representatives and, and union members, is because I want to make sure that counsel can have some time to weigh the options they have in front of them for the broader structure and considerations, and not make any rushed guidance or directive this evening, which would, again, push the scheduling shifts out about nine days or more. So I want to give you the kind of high-level background. Our interim Director of Public Safety brought this to our consideration this evening before the council meeting, and I wanted to make sure I could put that in front of you. Again, I'd request you to consider a motion to establish a letter of understanding that no shifts are formalized in their schedule until after December ninth. The goal would be then to have discussions in advance of December ninth, gather all the information you need around the options and structural considerations, so that counsel can make a more informed decision at that day. So we'd be looking for a motion for establishment of a letter of understanding. Again, it's a proposal, we would need to respect our union members' wishes, so they would have to obviously sign that if they agree to that, but it would basically, in short, be a nine-day postponement of the shift scheduling to allow counsel to have a more informed decision or directive on December ninth, our first council meeting in December.
Is that for POAM, COAM, or both?
It's for both.
Both.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by McNabb, and Katie, I want to make sure you have that language correct. So it would be to, Mike, I would, I would task with assembling a letter of understanding that would avoid, or postpone, the formalization of the shift schedule for 2025 until after December ninth. And then on December ninth agenda, we would have that as a topic. We'd get you all the information you need in advance, so that you can consider all the factors at play and give our department directive at that time.
I'll, I'll second that.
Second by Mulnar, and now we're in discussion, so Councilman Valentine.
Are you saying what hours the shifts are? You're not talking about what personnel are going to fill the shifts, right?
Per the contract, the COAM and the POAM have to pick their shifts for 2025 thirty days in advance. Obviously, they have five days, and everything's unforeseen right now, because my position, as well as the detective's position, one of the road officer's positions, is temporary at this point.
So we'll present, we plan on presenting a variety of options for counsel to consider, Councilman Valentine, so that you can consider that structure and the shift logistical scheduling, so that we can make a more informed directive come December ninth meeting. We just feel like it'd be irresponsible to push any directive today without more information, and this is fresh off the press for us this evening. Any questions or further discussion? And if not, Mike can work to draft this and circulate with counsel, and then we'd be leaning on our interim Director of Public Safety to interface with the department accordingly.
Yes.
Yeah, and the goal would be to create some, some certainty going forward on structure, so that, you know, there's confidence in that. And I think that we can work together to accomplish that, so it's on our agenda for the ninth, so that we can create some certainty and confidence going forward.
Absolutely. I just want to thank our interim Director of Public Safety and the police department at large for all that they're doing to make sure our city is safe and taken care of, and we look forward to having this in agenda item on the ninth. Mike will be drafting this proposed letter of understanding, and counsel, you'll see a plethora of information that we can weigh for our discussion. All right, any further discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
That completes my report this evening, and I'd like to now turn our attention to the council reports. And Item A, Councilman Valentine, the floor is yours.
Well, I just want to remind everybody, December seventh is the Christmas parade. Lineups at four thirty, parade starts at five thirty, goes from the city building here to the community center. There's a lot of stuff going on that night, so, you know, tree lighting and everything else, so I hope people will participate in that. Now, is, I attended the thirty-third district court meeting for Marsha today, can I talk about that?
Yes, please, thank you for doing that.
The thirty-third district court management council meeting was today. They elected a new chair, which is Ken Robel, who's the Flat Rock City Council. They discussed contract negotiations with their employees. They were going through contract negotiations as they will right now. They discussed a budget. They're going to have a proposed budget resolution to us by probably the end of this week or early next week, and they'd like us to see if we approve it prior to December fifteenth. And the tenants was Judge Hesson, Judge McNally, Mayor of Rockwood, five city council members, and they only meet a few times a year.
I just want to thank Councilman Valentine. Councilwoman Cosmore called me this evening, and obviously she's where she should be with her family, but Councilman Valentine stepped up and attended that, so thank you. We'll make a note to have the December ninth meeting include the budget review, so that they have that be prior to their deadline in the fifteenth, so thank you, Councilman Valentine. Any questions for Councilman Valentine on either recreation or the thirty-third district court update? Great. Councilwoman Cosmore, as we mentioned, has been excused, absent this evening. Sending love to her and her family, so we'll turn it over to Councilwoman Wood for Beautification Commission and Historical Museum.
Okay, just a couple things. The tree, the Christmas tree for City Hall will be put up this weekend, and the winter planters will be coming Monday, we'll be setting those up. We'll be getting the, I guess, all the decorations, whatever, are going to be put together from the Rockwood floors this time, instead of going all the way out to English Gardens. We're kind of keeping it closer to home, so.
Nice.
That's happening Monday. And December second, the meeting is, our beautification meeting is here at six o'clock, and that's all I have for, well, I do have a little note on the Kubota, because I think Robin, the chairman, and Mike have gotten together to get some quotes on some brake lights and mirrors for the Kubota, but we did purchase that, and we're excited about that, so hopefully next spring we're ready.
Look at that.
The rest of this is, where am I going to find my notes? The Historical Museum will be open December first, and we picked up the new cabinet, and we are looking for help in getting some of our artwork and items hung up, up there. And so Mike did give me maybe the DPW to help with a few things, you know, with the work order or something like that, because the ceiling is too tall and the thing, the paintings are too heavy, and, you know, I don't have any other way to put anything up up there, so. And that will be open December first, and that's it.
Thank you so much. Any questions for your Councilwoman Wood? Great. Councilman Cox?
Thank you. Regarding the planning commission, we received and filed a master plan amendment from Grozeal Township, and the commission rejected a sign application for nineteen eight fifty Gibraltar Road based on the new sign not having a nautical theme attached to it. So those two things happened on the planning commission, on the DDA, we re, we just acknowledged and received and filed the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five DDA budget as of eleven fifteen. Those are the updates for those two.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Councilman Cox on planning or DDA?
I do. Councilman, in your last DDA meeting, you did a revision or you requested revision on the sign for the doctor's office because of the lighthouse. Is there anything in other works, because they just passed the sign on, I think, whatever the condominiums are coming in on North Gib, and that one doesn't have the logo on it, and that's a fresh sign? I know that's been in the agenda at points in time on, on the planning commission.
It's been discussed at the planning commission of, there's a couple instances of signs being redone without the nautical theme, and I.
Right.
There's been no action taken yet that I know of.
I noticed that there was no action, there was, it was like, things jumped ahead to the new guy, and then the other two or three got put in the hold file, for lack of a better word. So maybe you can bring, bring that up.
I concur. I think I will get into that by next meeting, we'll have some form of action for an ordinance officer or something to occur, so I'll get on resolving that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Councilman Cox? Councilman McNabb, take us to Waterways.
Nothing to report at this time, still waiting for the county to get back with us, and waiting to find out when the markers will be present or ordered.
Okay.
That's about it for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Councilman McNabb? Any questions for Councilman McNabb? Councilman Mulnar?
No report.
Any questions for Councilman Mulnar? All right. That will close our council reports, and will turn us over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Gores.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In 12 days is our Christmas parade and tree lighting. In advance, I would like to thank our Gibraltar DPW for all their work they've been doing around town with the lights. I've got a love-hate relation with lights right now. Every day, one goes out. I'd also like to thank Gibraltar Police Department, the Border Patrol, the Fire Department, Sunseekers Boat Club. They do all the arranging at the parade. The Kiwanis Club and Gibraltar Rotary for their donations for the games for the, after the parade event, and also Gibraltar Recreation. And the food trucks will be, the Meat Guys, Tyler's Charlie's Chunky Treats, Kito's Coffee Truck, and Gus's Food Trailer. And that's the food trucks for the night.
Just thank you to all the parties that were listed, Recreation, Department of Public Safety, DPW, and many, many more for making it a special time of year and celebrating the holidays. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, once I've all that out.
Yes, appreciate that immensely. Any questions for Parks and Recreation Director, Gores? All right. City Attorney?
Nothing to report.
No report. Any questions for our city attorney? Before I turn over to City Administrator Blackburn, it was a special day on November 23rd, a birthday, so just want to wish you happy birthday on the 23rd. And we're glad to have you here in the city of Gibraltar and appreciate you and your on-ramp helping advance all these projects that we referred to earlier and more. So thank you.
Thank you.
And happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
First item on the agenda is Wayne County permits. That just authorizes the city to perform emergency works in the county right-of-way and that they're not held liable if something happens while we're working. Something that's done every year, just a normal permit application. With, there's a resolution attached that if you guys pass it, we'll sign it in to them so we can perform our duties.
I'll make the motion to sign the resolution for authorizing the execution of the Wayne County permits.
Second.
Second by Cox. Any discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumey?
Yes. Motion carried. Back to you.
Next on the list is request to purchase a flammable safety cabinet for the DPW. It's something that should have been had a while ago. They had asked for it in the past. It hasn't gone nowhere from previous administrations. It's a fire and safety item. I provided one for you in the packet. I was given another one earlier before this meeting that is a little bit cheaper. So I'm looking for authorization just to buy one, not this one that's in the packet, so I can do a little research. This company here, we do not have an account with, so I'll have to set up an account with them with our tax-exempt certificate, so this will be a little bit, this will take a little bit longer than this one I had in here with Granger since we already have an account and all that information is done.
Any questions?
How much is it?
This one I got today? Just under $1,000.
How much is the one that you want to get?
$1,500.
$1,596.
$1,596.
It requires three bids, right? Because it's over $1,000?
Yeah, I was asking for, it's tough because I can go out, I can get quotes, but when we don't have accounts with these companies, it takes a while to set up accounts and everything else. We don't have accounts at, a bigger city has accounts at more places than we obviously do.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion then that we purchase the safety cabinet, fire safety cabinet, not to exceed $1,500. For the best interests of the city, we'll only go with the one bid, whatever one you decide.
Okay. You need to revise that because the current quote is $1,596.30, so I'd say not to exceed...
Not to exceed $1,59, not to exceed $1,600.
Is that inclusive of tax and other fees there?
We're taxed, taxes on it.
So we're all good, no other fees on that? Okay.
There might be, it doesn't say, but sometimes there's an additional shipping charge. But if that happens, I'll bring that back to council when I get, when I do it.
Why don't we just change it to not to exceed $1,700? That should include shipping, right?
That should be good.
So you don't have to bring it back again.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Discussion.
To support Councilman Valentine, in my experience, this is a safety issue, like an intimate safety issue. Usually, fire chiefs, when they do inspections on commercial buildings and whatever, these are things that have to be implemented immediately. I know this from experience, so I think it's wise that you purchase it immediately.
Yep. My headspace is leaning that way. I appreciate you calling out the bidding process, but due to the safety nature of a flammable cabinet, I agree wholeheartedly with that sentiment.
I think we can, we can look at multiple options, be it Granger, Uline, Amazon, whatever other sources are out there, and I don't, do we necessarily need an account to log in and put our credit card in there and purchase? I don't know if that adds any more time. I realize there's the sales tax exemption.
Yeah, I could use my state credit card, but we'll be charged tax. That depends if that's an issue with state council, because I won't be able to go through the tax exemption process without filling out the necessary paperwork.
Right, but if we got an option that's $1,000 and it's the same product, and we can get it in the same timeframe delivered versus $1,500, adding 6% to that, 60 bucks, it's $1,060 versus, you know, up to $1,700. So without adding, without creating the account and getting the sales tax exemption approved, if we're able to save 500 bucks and go through...
That's fine.
Yeah, then I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
Agreed. Any other discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumey?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you so much.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for Clerk Tomasic?
Treasurer Fonti?
I'm up. So good evening, everyone. First thing on my agenda is request to council for the development and implementation of an employee exit plan. I'm sorry I didn't bring this up at our study session, but on the following IT meeting we had the other day, we realized that we don't really have those things in our procedures. And before I get into that a little bit, I just want to thank council for having that study session. You've recognized a lot of hurdles, a lot of different areas we need to succeed on. On a personal note, I'd hate to see this council broke up in any fashion without people realizing all the facts that are going on with all the other issues of litigation and other things that are happening to council right now. So like, I agree with Mike on the speeding. I think everybody needs to take a deep breath right now, realize the task at hand that's facing this council. There's a lot of things in the procedural area, in my area, that needs to be amended or changed or even developed, pretty much following all the caveats that Plant Moran has put out in the past councils and preceding governments. So this needs to be attended to. This council is strong enough to do that, along with all the infrastructure problems we have, so I'd like to see if we could all stay united on that front. The employee exit plan, I'd like to see council, either through a resolution or a motion, assign that to Mike and Amy so that we can cover all the areas of how we exit employees, good, bad, or indifferent. There has to be a plan here for security of our systems, all systems, our softwares, our computers, our emails, our entry into the building, and so on and so forth. So I think, I think the logic is there, the common sense is there, and we just need to get a plan in place. So I think, at least my strong desire would be to have council, someone on council, make a motion to that effect, and we get that portion of our procedures in place immediately.
I like that. And I would just add, Mike, Amy, and then just make sure we run it by our city attorney as appropriate.
Absolutely, yep.
I like that a lot. I fully agree. A motion would be in council's court if you so chose.
Request that we develop a, develop an implementation of an employee exit plan. Motion to do that.
A motion by Valentine?
Second. A motion.
Second by McNabb. Council on discussion?
So would this be an update to the policy manual, personnel manual, or is this a policies and procedures manual that we have for operating in city employment in general? Is there, is there a different set of policies and procedures above and beyond the personnel policy manual that exists now? Anybody's knowledge, I should say?
The way I envisioned it, it would be like a checklist so that you could go through and go, did we do this? Yes. And then we would have this whole, create a checklist to make sure that we didn't miss anything, like a procedure, procedural thing, which we don't currently have, and it would be helpful just to make sure no items go unchecked.
I guess if we don't, if we don't have a policies and procedural, procedures manual now, would it, would this be an addendum to our personnel policy? Or would it just be a standalone?
No, this is just, go be a checklist for the administration. Did the employee have state keys? Did we get them back? Did the employee have state credit cards? Did we get them back? Did we notify IT to disable their email address? It's just a checklist to go down for the administration to make sure that before that employee separates city that we've checked all the boxes, that everything's been returned and everything's good before we, before they leave, and we don't run into some problems that we seem to be having now.
Would this include an option for an exit interview?
I think it should.
I think it should.
Agreed. And I think, I think to your point, I think what could be done is if council has motioned and Mike and Amy are spearheading the charging consultation with our city attorney, let's take a look exactly what you said, make sure that it relates to the guardrails of our existing policy, where gaps are identified in this, let's implement them. But I like the path, and I would just say you two, plus you, would have to come back for recommendations before anything's formalized.
Cool.
Any other discussion on that item? Katie, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumey?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is a little more, a little more detailed. It has to do with the special investigator and the process and the progress we're having on that assignment. So what I'm going to do is inform everybody in the gallery here and the council and those watching at home, a little bit of the background of where we're at there. I know there's been a lot of questions. It has nothing to do with this litigation, so I'm not worried about obtaining anything there. This is all freedom of information, material that's available to our citizens currently. So I'm going to paraphrase the first part of the request for a special investigator and the audit. And for, for those taking notes and those watching at home, there's a treasurer letter of August 20, August 26th to council that's available for reading. There's council meeting videos for August 12th, August 30th, which was the special meeting for the treasurer regarding the August 26th letter, and then there's a September 9th meeting. Those three meetings are important as we go here, but all meetings are important to actually review them, listen to the communications in these meetings, and form your own opinion instead of leaving your opinions to somebody else that might not matter in your life. There's a lot of saber rattling going on here. My office has to deal with facts. This whole investigation, this whole issue deals only in facts. It's not emotional. It's not prejudicial to one side or another. It's why we asked for a special investigation, so we could have no conflict of interest here. So let me begin. This is part one. "On August 26th of 2024, the Office of the Treasurer informed council by correspondence of the following. As the Treasurer of the city of Gibraltar, this office is responsible for overseeing, safekeeping, and providing custody of the taxpayers' money, including payrolls. These are duties we take seriously. Gibraltar taxpayers expect financial accountability and deserve to know how their money is being spent, inclusive of undertaking the necessary steps when, number one, allegations of fraud and theft of taxpayer dollars are brought forward; two, the discovery of questionable use by city employees of city-issued credit cards; three, the discovery of questionable use of city employees, city employees of city...
Any other discussion on that item? Katie, please call roll.
McNabb.
Yes.
Molner.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is a little more, a little more detailed. It has to do with the special investigator and the process and the progress we're having on that assignment. So what I'm going to do is inform everybody in the gallery here, in the council, and those watching at home, a little bit of the background of where we're at there. I know there's been a lot of questions. It has nothing to do with this litigation, so I'm not worried about obtaining anything there. This is all Freedom of Information material that's available to our citizens currently. So I'm going to paraphrase the first part of the request for a special investigator and the audit. And for, for those taking notes and those watching at home, there's a treasurer letter of August 20, August 26th to council that's available for reading. There's council minute, meeting videos for August 12th, August 30th, which was the special meeting for the treasurer regarding the August 26th letter. And then there's a September 9th meeting. Those three meetings are important as we go here, but all meetings are important to actually review them, listen to the communications in these meetings, and form your own opinion instead of leaving your opinions to somebody else that might not matter in your life. There's a lot of saber rattling going on here. My office has to deal with facts. This whole investigation, this whole issue deals only in facts. It's not emotional, it's not prejudicial to one side or another. It's why we asked for a special investigation so we could have no conflict of interest here. So let me begin. This is part one. "On August 26th of 2024, the Office of the Treasurer informed council by correspondence of the following. As the Treasurer of the City of Gibraltar, this office is responsible for overseeing safekeeping and providing custody of the taxpayers' money, including payrolls. These are duties we take seriously. Gibraltar taxpayers expect financial accountability and deserve to know how their money is being spent, inclusive of undertaking the necessary steps when, number one, allegations of fraud and theft of taxpayer dollars are brought forward; two, the discovery of questionable use by city employees of city-issued credit cards; three, the discovery of questionable use of city employees, city employees of city-sponsored store accounts; four, the purchasing of rental items over $500 without resolution and/or purchase orders authorized by council, which, as you know now, has been amended to $1,000, but at that point in time it was $500; and number five, the misuse of a position where a position or title should not be used to solicit or endorse on behalf of the city without first obtaining prior authorization by council for such solicitation and/or endorsement." So the treasurer's statement on number one, the allegations of fraud and theft of taxpayer dollars in that correspondence, paraphrasing again, "On Monday, August 12th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at a city council meeting, the meeting was called to order by Mayor Schumate. During the first session of the public comment segment, the former Gibraltar mayor stated the following." And again, paraphrasing, but quoting, "At the last regular council meeting, Treasurer Fonti read a letter from Plant Moran, our city auditors, where the tone seemed to suggest a crime, perhaps fraud and time card payroll theft occurred." Going on, he says, "No payroll changes were approved by city council." And that's very important, people, because the only people that can change wage structures here is city council. And remember, you're dealing with taxpayer money, so employees cannot give out gratuities through payrolls or whatever for a job well done or whatever by additional hours. This is taxpayer money, and it has to come through the council approval criterion. And we established, this is a sidebar now, we established our wages in 2013 during the case of Mendel versus City of Gibraltar regarding 1099 employees. The wages were established at a December meeting on 2013, and they went through very little iterations from that time up until present, when in August there was a formal change and redirection on, on the payroll reporting system. So that's another thing to keep in mind. He goes on to say, "No payroll changes were approved by council." And then he concludes, "I want to thank Treasurer Fonti, Keeper of the Funds, for bringing this matter to the public's attention." And if you notice, it was Treasurer Fonti who brought this to the public's attention. No one else. It was brought to the attention of council, and it was brought to the attention of the public. That was an August 30th meeting. You were all welcome to come. It wasn't closed, and that's why I would encourage everyone to look at that meeting and see what this council accomplished at that time. Employee payroll was funded by the taxpayers of the City of Gibraltar. Fraud is defined as an intentional act or mission for personal gain designed to deprive the city of its resources or assets to which the individual or individuals or persons or persons is or are not entitled to. Theft and larceny is the wrongful taking of property, absence of consent, and the intent to deprive the city of its property. In that letter, the treasurer responded accordingly. A was, under the Code of Ordinance, Section 6.8, investigation. "The treasurer is seeking a special council meeting, which, by the way, was held on August 30th and was open to the public, to inquire and investigate into this matter and the details of any internal investigation previously undertaken, the time period of that alleged violations, as well as who knew and when they knew, and all other pertinent and related information, along with any questions council may contribute at this time. The purpose of this special council meeting should be for the council's informational purpose, only and/or for the advancement to move forward with the following. One was, once the special council meeting is concluded and to prevent any conflict of interest with any part of this investigation for reasons of, A, proximity of relationships to employees, elected officials, appointed employees, or perceived stature within the community; B, for fear of the potential loss of departmental employees; C, for fear of asking for repayment of non-entitled funds; D, fear of imposing discipline and/or fear of retribution." So the treasurer's office is requesting the following, "That council unify and adapt the council resolution to direct our city attorney to contact the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office or another state of Michigan agency to conduct an independent investigation of this entire departmental situation where allegations of the fire department's payroll, fraud, and theft occurred. Two, if a resolution from council to direct our city attorney to request the above investigation is not acquired, the treasurer's office alone will move to secure the necessary investigation through the appropriate outside agencies." This also, excuse me, this office is also recommending that council authorizes an independent audit to ascertain the amount of unearned payroll that was distributed. Once the amount of unearned payroll is identified and certified, the treasurer acting on behalf of the city taxpayers will seek any appropriate and applicable restitution." So now that brings us to today, the request for the special investigator. At September 9, 2024, council, at the council meeting, the mayor, council, and city attorney agreed to obtaining a special investigator to lead and direct this special investigation per ordinance, Section 6.8. The city attorney forwarded to the treasurer potential jurors and law firms familiar with this matter. The treasurer has followed up, and with our, with my search, I have selected a special investigator who is highly respected and extremely experienced and knowledgeable with municipal matters such as ours to head up this investigation. I personally was interviewed by them. They are conducting a conflict screening right now to make sure there's no conflict of interest from anybody they have represented in the past. They're skilled at what they do here. They've been to the top of the mountain in the, in the state of Michigan government, down to private practice as they are now. The treasurer has advanced from the interview phase right now, and the next step is to conduct a more in-depth discussion for purposes of what the treasurer, on behalf of the taxpayer and councils, council wants to achieve on behalf of our citizens. Certainly, without hesitation, is obtaining all the facts and to resolve some of the fundamental questions that these allegations have brought forward. Number one, who knew? Two, when did they know? Three, why did the former treasurer resign? Four, why did the city administrator resign? Five, why did the newly appointed treasurer, within three weeks or so of my appointment, receive notification from Wayne County Treasurer requiring him to be bonded and personally indemnified for $1.7 million, when no other City of Gibraltar treasurer before him have ever had this requirement imposed upon this office? Now, some will say that there's always been a bond on the treasurer, but let me clear that up. There's a $250,000 fidelity bond on all our employees, including the treasurer. So that doesn't even come to the level that Wayne County was imposing on this treasurer. And the $1.7 million, I believe, Amy, was like 25% or so, or represented a portion of the taxes we collected. It took a lot of help to get a bond for the treasurer of the City of Gibraltar without a personal indemnification. Mr. Molner, help me with that. When no others, we're going to reach out and take that responsibility. I'm extremely grateful for that, and so should the citizens of the City of Gibraltar, because in the future, there's, whoever is the treasurer going to be, if they had to personally indemnify for $1.7 million and up, I can't believe anybody would take that position. So it's extremely important that we led the way with this legacy for future treasurers. The next question is six, why wasn't it disclosed to council and public? We found out about this at the August 30th special council meeting, when Councilman Molner reached out and asked, "When did we know about this? When was this conducted?" And it was conducted in January of 2024. Was the timing of this investigation and report a possible distraction from something else going on in the city? This is a question we've asked, and we don't know the answer to that yet. Why did it take the treasurer, why did it take the treasurer to notify council and the public and not those who are directly responsible to provide oversight, approval, and discipline to the fire department's payroll activities? I don't know if I read that correctly, but it, it required me to open this up to the public and to the council. It should have been those that provide direct oversight to those departments, and those that were approving payroll, and those that had the right to discipline if they found any activity that wasn't within, within the correctness of what council dictated. Number nine, how much taxpayer money is involved here? Don't know that yet either. Ten, how does a city seek restitution, both financially and legally? Eleven, why hasn't council ever seen the director's report issued to Wayne County or the state police? I don't believe anybody on council has yet seen any report that the director submitted and claims that nobody wanted to press forward. When I found out about that, I asked for the state police investigator in charge. I eventually got that number. I made a personal call to the detective bureau, reached the investigator, and he gave me the lowdown on what needed to be done first, because they weren't going to do our forensic accounting, and that's why I approached council with the forensic accounting request. That was step one. Step two was to acquire a special investigator so that everybody here would be at arm's length. It wouldn't be a target of the investigation, that the investigation would hold its own water by the facts presented. Twelve, why wasn't the treasurer allowed to participate with this report prior to submitting the state police, submitted to the state police as the director was instructed to do so? So when you look at the August 30th council meeting, Councilman Molner directly asked the director for me to participate. I never was asked to participate. I never put my two cents in. I never seen the report going in. I had things to say. I wanted to be part of that. I obviously should have been part of it because I opened this investigation up, and, but I was never asked. And only to learn on a subsequent meeting that, that it wasn't going to go anywhere because we, we should look at our human resource policies first. Item 13, why was this report, as stated by the director during the August 30th council meeting, requested by the treasurer, going to be placed on an outside computer and not the police department computer? So there's, there's a, there's a question on what an outside computer is. I think we're all commonsensible here to know that when somebody says, "I can't put it on the police computers because there's officers there that I'll put it on an outside computer," is an issue that we brought up with IT. So big question mark there. The investigator could look into this and come up with an answer. There's many more other questions, I'm sure, that once we put our combined collective heads together, we'll come up with more. The auditors will supply some of these questions, answers to some of these questions. Some of them will be direct answers because they're part of an audit process for a county. And some others may be generalized interpretations of a few of these questions. But you have to remember, these are auditors only. They're skilled accountants. They're not going to interpret the law for us or give us the facts that we need. We will need the eyes and legal expertise of a special investigator to determine all of the facts and answer to those questions, and I'm sure several more included, but not limited to criminal charges, civil actions, or no action at all. If we engage a special investigator now while the forensic audit is going, the special investigator and the auditors working together will be able to minimize and share information instead of having duplicate interviews and so on and so forth, without, you know, totally duplicating the process again. "The taxpayers' questions will be ascertained and answered and not shielded by nondisclosure agreements or by an insurance agency's desire to settle to a minimum or minimize their client, which is the insurance company, cost exposure, where the taxpayers will remain uninformed." I hope you understand that. So when you bring an insurance attorney in to, to litigate complaints and litigation like that, they're going to litigate on behalf of the, the agency to minimize their exposure. They come first, and it's only natural. And that might be a reason why, Amy, that we're not included in these meetings, because it might be a reason of, of non-city funds when you take a logical look at it, because they'll be spending the insurance money on any settlement. And there'll be nondisclosures, and the public won't know anything. So my ask, this is my ask for tonight. "The treasurer is requesting a motion from council inasmuch as council supports obtaining this special investigator to fulfill council's agreement to move this matter into a special investigation under ordinance 6.8." So the treasurer's office, my next step would be to obtain the special investigator and get into more of a discussion of possible costs and so on and so forth. And I can bring that to council on my next meeting if council wants to continue with this.
Can I ask a question before this is motioned?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why do we need to have, pay somebody to look at the financial audit? We, we can read it ourselves, and if there's, if there's wrongdoing, we take care of the wrongdoing by limiting that person from their position. Why do we have to have a third party that would pay?
Because it might, Councilman, it might reach to the level of civil and, and criminal action. And that's not, in speaking with Anthony in the beginning when this all started, that's something that is, that he wanted to move to a special investigator. When I talk to, to these professionals, they're all saying the same thing, that it, it can't be left to us to determine what is civil, what is criminal, and what is just the facts.
I think that I could read it and determine myself what is civil and what is criminal.
Are you capable of filing a criminal charge against somebody?
Why would we bother with that? Why don't we just eliminate that person from their position?
I think, well, I think you can do that, too.
But I'm the treasurer, all right? I'm the custodian of city funds. And, you know, we, we collect taxes here. Two things are certain in life, death and taxes. I'm, I'm that half of the grim reaper. So I want my money. I want my money spent wisely. I, I don't want any, anything that's wrong. If, if there's, if there's a logical end to that, you know, like I've always told council, I'm not in charge of any discipline. I'm, I'm in charge of the custody of funds. And your former mayor, mayor pointed that out, that in his opening statement on August 12th, that, "Thank you, Mr. Fonti, for enlightening me on the Plant Moran, and thank you, Mr. Fonti, for being the custodian of the taxpayers' funds." That's where I come in. What you want to do with interdisciplinary thing is one thing, but what taxpayer money, when it's involved, you're talking state attorney general stuff. You're talking about the, the ascension to criminal charges. And those are things I can't answer either, Councilman. You know, I, I don't, I don't want to be in that position to, to, to make a judgment, criminal, civil, or whatever. That's what a special investigator can do, and that's what he can recommend. And whether you have, whether you have the ability at that time, and maybe our attorney could answer that, to, to say you're going to press charges or not if it's criminal, I don't know when it comes to taxpayer money, so.
Yeah. And let me just throw in one thing, because you're, to your point, right? So Charter, Section 4.17 of our Code of Ordinance is, appointed department officers states, "The head of each department shall have the power to hire, suspend, discharge, or otherwise take appropriate disciplinary action against the employees of his department with confirmation by the council." So just be mindful of charter process as it relates to any sort of employee intervention, right? Separately, to your point, I just want to make sure I understand the chain of events. We had talked about giving you the guidance to work with Anthony to get these special investigators. It sounds like you found one of them, that you?
I found one, yes.
All right, great. So then you're going to come back to council with a proposal on the financial elements of that.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I, you know, obviously, if I can engage the attorney, I'd do it right now. I would have done it a long time ago. But, but the next step is to, I, you know, I'll be real frank with you. It was pretty much an interview process on me and what was in front of us. I shared some information with them. I shared where we were going. They're aware of the newspaper articles on all the other outside litigation and noise that's going on. At the heart of this, that's actually, you know, pretty much a sidebar. So I was going to ask you tonight, councilman, if you wanted to, because you and Marsha were two votes that didn't vote for me for treasurer.
Right.
I respect that. I understand that, and I've got no problem with it, but I would be more than happy to take you with me on this next venture, because the first venture was a phone call, you know, phone call interview. The next one would be to help you understand the gravity of this thing.
I, you know what, I really appreciate the fact, what you're doing, lugging over our money, but I think we should see the report first before we make any decision. There might be no evidence of anything.
Absolutely.
If there is evidence of something, then we could discuss what we're going to do.
So are you happy, are you happy with the questions that you'll, won't get answered? Who knew, when they knew, how long they knew? Why was it not expressed?
I think, so if I may, I think all those are very important questions. So Treasurer Fonti, help me understand then what you're looking for today. So we have path for you on special investigator. You found one. When do we get the results of the Plant Moran forensic audit?
I think the last time we talked or the last council meeting was probably six, eight weeks away.
Do you have the results of the financial audit already?
Oh, no, no. You just approved the, I think, the third phase for it, you know?
Yes, we approved the third phase, so we're on track there to get that broader data package. Do we, so what are you looking for this evening from council?
I want the support to continue for the special investigator to look at what their engagement costs are going to be and bring back more of the details that, like I said, councilman can accompany me and ask questions, and maybe he can explain better than me. We have an attorney sitting there who kind of explained all this to us way in the beginning on the August 30th meeting, so.
So you have council support already on pursuing the special investigator search?
Right.
So it sounds like the next meeting you could bring back a package of what it's going to cost or what the process would look like for us?
Well, I'd like a, I don't know, a vote of confidence. I don't want to chase a rabbit hole, neither do any, you know, investigators. They don't want to go down a rabbit hole if this council is not in support of it. You know, unfortunately, it costs money, and unfortunately, this whole cloud over this thing is a result of not having certain things in place and people watching the store. And, you know, I can go on and tell you, you know, my short time here of when I walked in and how it was for me to sign checks and what I found in my first, you know, encounter here, it probably, it would probably, do you actually know how it was for me signing checks here? Because you should be concerned. We should sit down and we should talk about it because, you know, a check signing thing that should have took 30 minutes. My first adventure through this field was almost four hours. There were duplicate checks, there were accounts that were being, repetitively being paid for for over 13 or 14 months with people approving them, and we didn't even have the product that we were approving. And so it's been very difficult. It's been very trying for somebody like me that walks in and knows how long a check signature with all the proper authorizations in place should go on. One of the biggest daunting tasks that this city has is the approval of payroll. There's a lot of moving parts to payroll here. It's not an easy task to sit down and approve payroll. You see the report here. It's very difficult. It's very difficult to understand. Do you agree, Mayor?
A 100%. And I'll just say, like, I think if you're looking for support, I think council signaled nothing but support of the pursuit of this audit and the pursuit of the answer to the questions. I want to just be able to understand the cost of that.
Well, I think I do, too, and, but they cautioned me just to make sure that I talk to council and see if we can, you know, if you still have that support. I have no idea what the costs are. I mean, Anthony has already warned me, it's expensive, no matter what it might be or who it might be.
Is it someone on that list that you gave you or someone different?
See, you're pretty smart, see?
Well, I don't know.
It's not.
Okay, because I can give you a gauge of who's on the list, but...
Yeah.
So you already have support from council, right? We have already even resolution for it. So I would say, why don't you bring back the cost package so that we know what we're embarking upon?
Is council comfortable with that, or should we have a motion for support to continue?
It doesn't cost us anything to identify the cost, does it?
Oh, God, no, I hope not.
Well, so there you go. So what's the downside in, what's the downside in bringing to December 9th meeting, bring, if you can, bring a general cost pathway? That way we can understand what we're talking about.
Okay.
Unless anybody disagrees with that. I'd like to understand.
I support you.
I know you do, Patrick.
I voted no because I just thought we should have more discussion, but...
We're here now, and we need it.
I support you. If you see something you don't like, don't sign it. That's kind of where I'm at.
That's pretty much the case, isn't it, Amy? Yeah, but, you know, things, I got to say, things are progressively getting bigger, better. I mean, council's recognizing a lot of things here, but it's broken, you know, it's severely broken. It, you know, pretty much didn't exist, so, but that's the other half of the equation. The bigger half here is what we're stuck with right now, and I don't know who would want this problem, you know? I didn't want to walk into this problem. Nobody on council wants to walk in this situation, but we have it.
Agreed.
And unfortunately, it's a burden, and it's a costly burden, and nobody's denied that audit, you know? It's 65 grand there or less, depending on how swiftly they come out. My whole thing about it is that I went back and I looked at all these videos that I'm talking about. These were some of the questions that, after being in the pocket now for a while and attending these meetings and going back and listening to, you know, what some of the principals in this whole thing had to say, it's very concerning.
Agreed.
It's bigger than, it might be a lot bigger than what you think, and it's, simple things, just so you know, simple things sometimes are very difficult to explain. You know, we all start stuttering, and we all trying to explain it and try to get it into a posture where everybody understands. I can't make anybody understand this. I don't know yet, you know? It's a lot of moving parts. As simple as it might be to take a simple payroll and convolute it and do things with it and end up having a report filed or an investigation conducted in January of 2024, and then what?
Twenty-three.
Twenty, no, it was conducted in 2024, back to 2023, and then I got to back into it? And if you watch the dots, I back into it because of the credit cards, the special house accounts and all this other stuff. I backed into it. I didn't even go forward to find it. I just backed into it and got informed of it.
We all want the facts, and I want the answer to those questions. So it sounds like December 9th you can bring a package together so we know what we're working with financially, generally speaking.
Okay.
So that we can have more informed discussion.
There's no telling, though. This could be year. I mean, who, when it happened, who knew, when they knew? That could take a lot of time.
I like your lead in.
I do want to know the answers to those questions. Absolutely.
We all do.
Agreed.
Okay.
You have our support.
Do you want to...
I support.
Do you want to drive down there with me the next time?
Why don't you go with him, councilman?
I'd love to have you. I mean, I...
Why don't you join him? Look at that.
I'll get some dates and...
I love that.
We'll take a run down there, and together we could badger him and find out more. I'm absolutely really comfortable with him. I just hope it's, you know, something that, you know, unfortunately, you always got to put money to the equation, but a lot of it's going to be the expedience, see if we can get this into the same timeframe as the audit is doing and get those parts without duplicating the process.
I appreciate that. Any questions for Treasurer Fonti beyond what's been discussed? Treasurer Fonti, anything else on your end?
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Finance Director McKeown, floor is yours.
I don't know how to follow that. I have moved on to Phase Two for the policy manuals. Phase Two is elected officials, so you guys should have all seen the policy manuals in your mailboxes. If you could please sign the back page and return it to either Mike or I, I greatly appreciate it. Phase Three, I'm probably going to be working with Cindy to do the volunteer firefighters. And then Phase Four will be our election workers, so moving right along.
You want elected people to sign this policy manual?
Yep, it applies to anybody who is a city employee, and anybody who we have on our payroll is considered a city employee.
Thank you for all the work, Amy. Appreciate it. I know I took an army, Mike as well, and many others.
And I'm sorry if I'm dropping the ball a little bit. I'm an accountant, I'm not an HR person. My degree's in accounting, so I'm trying just to get us at a good baseline, make sure all of our files are at that baseline, so moving forward, we can make sure that we have all of this on file.
Love it.
So, and then, yep, I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Finance Director McKeown? Interim Director of Public Safety Bullard, floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor and Council, since the last council meeting, the police department's responded to 177 calls for service, 37 incident reports, two arrests, 21 traffic citations, six juvenile school resource officer investigations, and five detective bureau investigations. Upcoming events, we have the Parsons Turkey Trot tomorrow. The police and fire department will be assisting. The police department will be hosting, excuse me, a second CPR class on December 9th. News for the police department, we're currently accepting applications for the position of full-time police officer. The post has, it's been put on the MCOs and social media. Sergeant Gary Robinson has ordered the Taser cartridges for our training. We have online training that's due by December 10th, and then after that, we'll have the in-person training with the Trenton Police Department. The 2014 Chevrolet Tahoe, one of our old police Tahos, was stripped of its equipment, and it's going to be sold by Enterprise here in the next few weeks. The title's been turned over. Once it is sold, the revenue will be used towards the lease of our 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe, which we're going to take delivery of hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday. Also, I'm going to be posting for the position of dispatcher on MCOs and social media. We just had a dispatcher resign two days ago, and we're short a midnight dispatcher. So, once interviews and applications are accepted or conducted, I'll bring the applicant back to council for approval. I also received final authorization from the DCC for the dispatcher EMD funding. EMD is an emergency medical dispatcher. The funding's going to provide the dispatchers training through the Apco Institute, which is online training. Dispatch currently uses a program called PowerPhone, which no longer supports the EMD dispatch. And then the cost of the PowerPhone software would be $50,000. The cost of the Apco training through the grant is $5,675, at no cost to the city. And it's going to be paid for fully by the DCC. Also included in my report is the ordinance officer report, the records clerk report, a Carfax report. I do not have any action items. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, what are they going to give us for that old Tahoe? You know, I mean, can we use that as a decoy?
Blue Book, I believe, is around $5,000.
If we just kept that thing and parked it in front of Parsons or on Bayview or Adams once in a while, they do it down south all the time.
It's completely stripped, so it has no lights, no markings, and it's at the...
Black and it's mean-looking.
Yeah, she's tired, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
I do, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
We might have talked about this, Director, that the Meadowlands, I thought there was an application that we had to secure so you could continue patrolling there. I think that was maybe a gift left to you from the former director.
I believe Katie secured that.
Yeah, we secured that. Council took action on that.
Are we good? All right, good. Take it off my list.
Yeah, council, forget the date, but we approved that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you for all you're doing. Thank you to your department. Echo your sentiment on Happy Thanksgiving coming up for everybody. Any other questions? Well, then we'll pass it over to Deputy Fire Chief Simon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. From November 7th to November 20th, Fire Department had 28 total calls, 28 of which were rescues, zero fires, zero auto aids, and only one of which was a mutual aid, only because we needed manpower for back-to-back calls. As of the 20th, we had 522 calls so far for the year and 41 total calls for the month of November. That concludes my report.
How's your department? You getting everything you need? Appreciate all you're doing.
We could always use more volunteers, so if anybody in the audience is listening and interested in participating on the department or anybody watching online, we'd love more people.
Thank you. Any questions for Deputy Fire Chief Simon? Great. With that being said, we are looking at...
Mayor, can I ask?
Yeah, please.
Deputy Chief, how many volunteers do we have?
I believe to date we have 17.
17?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? All right, thank you for the reports. No unfinished business this evening, no new business, and no table and referred items, so we'd like to open back up to our public comments. Any members of public, please approach the mic, make sure that light is still green, and state your name and address for us.
Bonnie Cross, 13336 Gerald Street. I'm sorry. You know, it was stated earlier that complaints have been made about the speed on Adams, and it's a shame that a beautiful dog like Tito had to die. But I'd like to make a comment that winter is coming, and there are homes right along Adams that are, their front door is practically on the street, and the snow is coming in. Little kids might run out and slip into the street with these speeders, and I just, it boggles my mind that it's going to take until January to do something about this, when you've had complaints about speeders in the past. I don't know what the solution is. Nobody really wants speed bumps. No one wants stop signs, and this little thing you put up that shows the speed limit is a farce. People slow down like it was mentioned earlier, and then after they pass it, they go on. I don't know how much one would cost. Maybe a solution would be one that takes a picture of a speeder, where you can send them a ticket in the mail, like they do at some stoplights. It would make the city money, and it would also probably save lives. But it just boggles my mind that it's going to take until January to have something to done, when this has been going on for so many years. I live right on the corner of Gerald and Adams, and I've yelled at people, and they've flipped me off the bird. They've given me the bird. I could probably start an aviator if, or they're cussing me out because I'm yelling at them. What has to be done, and how soon can we do it?
I really, really appreciate the comments. And Interim Director, any commentary on, perhaps even an update on the data as we do our two-week cycle in December?
Like I said last week, when I received the complaint, I immediately sent an email out to my officers, and they all are pulling incident reports, and they are stopping cars. So resident, non-resident, you know, if you're in violation and they deem fit, you're going to get a violation. Okay, so we have nine officers on this department. Obviously, we have a whole city to patrol. We're going to do what we can.
Took a short amount of time for us to come up with 90 people. Some of them live a little off the side street. A lot of them walk their dogs. They like to walk around Bayview and Adams. The kids are out there playing in their front yards, and, like I say, winter's coming, too. What are we going to do? Would it make a difference if it would have been a kid? It shouldn't. It should not make a difference. I drive around in my golf cart, and they pass me doing 50 miles an hour. I pull over whenever there's a car behind me. When I can't, I'll slow way down. If there's one ahead of me and they'll pass us both, so...
The safety of our community is the priority, and we're dedicated to taking action, and we're going to work to make sure that we do that as soon as possible. Any other public comment this evening?
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Bosmer, 29775, Point Drive, excuse me. First, I just want to commend the new director. Thanks for stating how many arrests were made, how many incident reports you've given. I missed that. When I sat on council, many, I think we had three chiefs at the time I was there, everyone gave a report, how many? 180, 190? It's important. A big portion of our budget is police and law enforcement and public safety, so thank you for doing that. Stay on council, stay at the... It was a write-in candidate that underwhelmed or overwhelmed, lost by 12 or 14 votes. So maybe I can look back on hindsight and see I'm not hitting what he's hitting. My dad's deceased. My dad lived in this town, I think, since 1956. He passed two years ago. I think it'll be this Thursday, the two-year mark. Anyway, he said, "Son, you sure you want to get back involved in that? You know what you've been through before." I said, "Dad, I love my town, and I want to serve." And he's like, well, they gave me, and they saw the grief I was getting as I progressively went closer to the election day. Like I said, I lost by 12 or 14 votes, which is fine. It was a fair, honest, I watched the recount. I didn't find any objections. He said, "Maybe they're going to find, you're, you're going to find something they don't want you to find." So, Dad's gone. I don't know if he can listen and hear in on this conversation right now. So I appreciate my father, his guidance, and he was pretty astute, and he retired from the Gibraltar School District. So when the police would call for a break-in or a potential break-in, the law enforcement would meet my dad at the building, see if it was locked, you know, had the keys. So my dad served our community, and I just wanted to kind of like, you know, like I said, it's two years, a little emotional, he's gone now. But Mr. Fonti, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for not stepping down. Thank you for not just bailing on the, the nonsense you're going through. He took a bullet for me, I think, so. Thanks for everybody's due diligence. Please support him in this endeavor. I'm 100% behind you. I think I've been here 46 or 47 in my 54 years, so just wanted to say my piece. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for the comment. Are there any other public comments this evening?